And we should be all set.
Great, thank you. Okay. Good evening. I am calling this public hearing to order in accordance with the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, MGLC 131, Section 40 in the Boston Wetlands Ordinance. Boston City Code Ordinance is Chapter 7-1.4. The Boston Conservation Commission will hold a virtual public hearing this evening on May 15, 2024, to review the following projects to determine what conditions, if any, the commission will impose in order to protect the interests of the public and private water supply, groundwater, prevention of pollution, flood control, prevention of storm damage, protection of fisheries and land containing shellfish, and protection of wildlife habitat. This evening's hearing will be followed by our regular meeting. And in accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, we are conducting this meeting online to ensure the public access to the deliberations of the Conservation Commission. The public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Additionally, the meeting is being recorded. If you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your video. Members of the public may have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov. For the record, I am Michael Parker, Chair of the Commission. Could staff present, please identify themselves?
Eleanor Edimary with the Environment Department.
DeeDee Hernandez with the Environment Department.
Great, thank you. And I think we have a full slate of commissioners tonight. Call the roll. Commissioner Sullivan.
John Sullivan.
Commissioner Long.
Nick Long.
Commissioner Wilson.
Mike Wilson.
Commissioner Conan.
Conan T. Rengadum.
Thank you. Commissioner Richmond. I know she's on. She's on mute. Commissioner.
Alice Richmond.
Commissioner Herbst.
Anne Herbst.
Great, thank you. Okay, first item on the agenda tonight is Notice of Intent for DEP File Number 0061990 and Boston File Number 2024-015 from Four Point Associates on behalf of the Massachusetts Port Authority for the repairs associated with an emergency certification for a sinkhole located at 256 Marginal Street in East Boston. Resource areas are land subject to coastal storm flowage and 100-foot buffer to coastal bank. Eleanor, I believe we're continuing this at the request of the applicant.
That's correct.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to continue this hearing.
So moved.
Give a second.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan.
Aye.
Commissioner Long.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Conan.
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond.
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that carries seven nothing. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a request for a determination of applicability from LEC Environmental Consultants on behalf of the Massachusetts Port Authority for the proposed rehabilitation of taxiway N from runway 15R-33L to runway 22L at Logan International Airport. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Thank you, Chair Parker. Chris Wish here with Massport Senior Environmental Planner. With me this evening is Sarah Dennechuk, Massport Senior Project Manager, managing this project. We also have members of our consultant team as well. And I guess I'll just proceed. We're here before you this evening with a request for a negative determination of applicability for the rehabilitation of taxiway N at Logan International Airport. Next slide, please. So this is just an aerial of the project area, which is at the northern extent of the airfield. So we're a little upside down here, but off to the left of the screen is Winthrop. To the right is Woodall Marsh in East Boston proper. From left to right, the project area extends from runway 22 left, past the end of runway 22 right, and then extends up towards the top of the screen where we have runway 15 right. This project will entail the milling and repaving of taxiway N within the existing paved taxiway footprint. I believe it's been around 10 years since the taxiway was last resurfaced, and there's a fair amount of wear and tear from aircraft. The project will also include a replacement of some of the runway guard lights, as well as cables within existing chases, all within the paved limits of the taxiway. At this point, I'll hand it off to Dan Wells from LEC Environmental to discuss the extents of the resource areas and buffer zone and how those relate to the project site and scope of work.
Great, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Again, my name is Dan Wells with LEC Environmental. If you could advance the slide, please. So this is a shot of the buffer zone plan that was submitted with the RDA, the buffer zone impact. So if you could go to the next slide, it's just to zoom in on the project area so you can see it more clearly. So what you're seeing is the, I'll start in the top left, so the very prominent blue line, that's the floodplain line. It's the Zone AE, elevation 10. So you can see, if you follow that line around, you can see the project is clearly outside of that, outside of the floodplain. So it's outside of the land subject to coastal storm flowage. If you look closely at, there's a thick black line, which is just to the left or below that blue line, which is the edge of the coastal resource areas, which includes coastal bank, salt marsh, coastal beach, and tidal flat. There's a thick black dashed line, which is the 100-foot buffer zone extending off of the coastal resource area boundary. So if you follow that, the project from left to right, you'll see a pink shading. And that's just the outer buffer zone where the project extends into the buffer. So you can see there's just a couple of small patches of pink as you proceed from left to right. In kind of the top right corner, it's a little bit wider, and that's the extent of the work in the buffer zone. That totals 36,500 square feet of work in the buffer zone. Almost all that is well beyond 50 feet from the resource area. That, in acreage, that's 0.84 acres. And just to put it in perspective, the entire project is about 23 acres. So less, 3.6% of the overall project footprint is in the buffer zone. So a very small percentage. If you can see, just on the north, plan north, there's a green line, which represents the erosion control barrier. That's going to be in place during construction, although it's pretty flat throughout that area, obviously. This will just ensure, once work is taking place, there's no erosion or sedimentation toward the resource areas. And just also want to point out, there's like a paved access road that goes around the entire perimeter of the project. So the entire project, there's existing pavement, you know, between the work and the resource area. So it's all the works in a highly developed existing area. So that's, that's the extent of the project.
Okay, thank you. How long will the work take?
I'll turn that to Mike.
I can jump in and answer that. So our goal, evening, everybody. Our goal is to start a portion of the project in June for a couple of weeks. But if you want to flip back to the graphic, I can kind of give a little bit of explanation for everybody. So aircraft typically arrive and depart into the wind. So our predominant wind pattern in July and August is that the aircraft will be using this taxiway to take off and land on two, two left and right. So we will not be working most likely July, August until the winds turn, and then we will come back for September and October. So it's anywhere from 70 to 90 days, depending on the weather, but there is a break to allow for aircraft operations during the summer.
Okay, so the erosion controls will be, they'll be in place during the work, but taken, taken out when there's no work being done, because you might not be doing this continuously.
Correct, and it's phased into eight different phases.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That's it for me. Eleanor, do you have anything on this?
I didn't have anything else to add. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sullivan.
No questions.
Commissioner Long.
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yeah, just one sort of general interest question. In terms of not seeing any sort of, you know, armoring or anything like that, that there might be along other edges of the airport. I was just wondering if you'd been seeing any sort of vegetation migration or erosion or anything like that. Seems like a fairly low energy environment, but was just curious.
I personally have not, and I've worked out on the airfields for about 20 years. But you're right, this is low energy because we're kind of isolated, and we haven't noticed a lot of changes. And Chris, I don't know if you want to chime in.
No, it's really been quite, quite stable. I mean, obviously with Woodall Marsh, we have a fairly vibrant salt marsh ecosystem there. But the bank has been, been quite stable. You know, the elevations of the airfield are quite high as well. A lot of this has been fill, so you know, historically, much of the bank has been fill and armored material that has grown in over, over time, but it has been largely, largely stable.
Okay, yeah, no, just curious. Thanks, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Conan.
Thank you, Chair Parker. Is there any work that's going to happen in the buffer area? I see the pink zones, and that's clearly where some of the work is happening. Is that the extent of it?
I can handle this. Yeah, that's, that's the only, the pink is work in buffer zone. Everything else is outside the buffer. That, the thick dashed black line is the, is the edge of the buffer zone.
Right. As far as the taxiway is concerned, I see what you're saying. I'm asking about, like, there is a paved walkway that is well within the buffer zone. Is any of that going to be touched as part of this work?
The perimeter road? No.
No, okay. Is this also an opportunity to look at where the 2070 flood level is going to be? I don't know if that, you're showing that here. I couldn't tell.
Now, the, the limits that are delineated there are the, you know, 1% chance of then FEMA flood nap. So that's the extent of the special flood hazard area.
This is the current.
That's the, the blue line, the blue line is what that represents.
Right, that's the current FEMA flood zone, right? It's not the 2070.
Exactly. No, it's not, it's not represented on the plan.
I'm, I'm just curious if this is, you're taking this opportunity to prepare for that level of flooding, or will that be a separate project?
I think whole scale, we'd have to look at the airfield as an entirety, because we are held by design criteria by the FAA, where our grades can't change more than 1%. So I think a, as we've had opportunities to raise grades, we have. It's just here, you're tied in by four runways and several other taxiways. So it would be a massive undertaking to raise grades significantly on the airfield.
Let me see. Thank you. That's all, Chair Parker.
Commissioner Richmond.
Sorry, I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Herbst.
No questions, thanks.
Thank you. Eleanor, anybody from the public raise their hand?
I'm not seeing any raised hands, and we also don't have anything in the inbox.
Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to issue a negative determination of applicability with standard erosion control conditions.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan.
Yes.
Commissioner Long.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Conan.
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond.
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst.
Aye.
And I vote yes. That carries seven nothing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night. Next item on the agenda is a request for an amendment to the original order conditions for DEP File Number 0061872 and Boston File Number 2022-031 from VHB on behalf of HRP 776 Summer Street Properties LLC for the proposed design changes to the stormwater outfalls and associated utility infrastructure located at 776 Summer Street in South Boston. Resource areas are designated port area land under ocean, coastal bank land subject to coastal storm flowage waterfront area, and 100-foot buffer to coastal bank. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Laura L. from VHB, here on behalf of the applicant.
Great.
And I'm John Flaherty, here on behalf of HRP.
Okay, welcome. Floor is all yours.
Great. If you just want to advance that, it'd be great. Yeah. Okay, so we are here tonight to ask for an amendment to our existing order. This is for the old L Street Station site and 776 Summer Street. This is actually a bit of a dated image. If you've driven by lately, you'd notice that that pink building is no longer there. It's demolished. If you can go to the next slide, please. So the project as a whole is a multi-phase redevelopment of the former Boston Edison Power Station. And it's a multi-phase project, so the first phase, well, the first phase was actually demolition. And then the second phase is the seawall, which is in disrepair right now. And so the order that we have governs the reconstruction of that seawall and creating an elevated seawall for increased resiliency for the property. And so the order was issued in July of 2022 for that piece of the project and the area immediately adjacent to it. And as part of that order, the plans included reusing the existing outfalls, which are 96-inch outfalls that were part of the power plant, and the outfall to, or stormwater outfalls to the reserve channel. Go ahead and advance, please. So looking at the area of the stormwater outfalls, because that's the area where we're looking to amend our order primarily. This is the area in question. And if you were the sidewalk folks who are on the sidewalk, this is the area that we walked adjacent to the water. The, the two sort of inlets there, we call them the sawtooth. Each one of those has one of the 96-inch diameter outfalls in it. And I'm going to turn over to Joe Capellino, who's going to discuss more about the, on the next slide, the existing and sort of proposed changes to those outfalls.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Can, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Great. So as Laura mentioned originally, we had planned to reuse the dual 96-inch diameter corrugated metal pipe outfalls that discharge into concrete settlement basins in existing conditions. We were going to extend those outfalls with a little bit new lengths of 96-inch pipe, kind of as shown in Section AA on the right, because we were going to be filling those settlement basins, those concrete structures, and moving the sheet line out, which that fill and sheet line was permitted as part of the original order. What we had discovered, when we went to BWC to get review of our drainage plan and our, what we're calling enabling utilities package, they preferred a totally separated new outfall. And part of that was because they would like that to be designed to their standards, be under their control via easement that we are working on, that easement agreement right now, and have a tide gate associated with that, which we would have to build a large vault structure to host that tide gate. So long story short is, these existing outfalls, 96 inches, had a lot of capacity, way more capacity than the, than the entire master plan site would ever need. And we mentioned that in the original stormwater report we submitted back in May of 2022 at about 500 CFS each. The only issue with that was that those original outfalls were down at elevation zero, Boston City Base. A new outfall is going to be about seven feet higher than that. We've landed at an elevation of about six foot eight inches, Boston City Base, and it's a 48-inch diameter outfall. So that.
If you could advance, sorry, sorry, Joe. One more. That's perfect. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, so now you can see the section, the new outfall, it's 48 inches in diameter. It's actually going to be HTP. That's a request that we just got from BWC for the final review. Regardless, it's in the same orientation, same elevation as shown on this section and in this plan. And you can see the vault structure with the two castings or access covers into a tide gate structure. There's a tide gate in that structure, stainless steel tide gate, that will help protect the site from saltwater intrusion and protect the upstream infiltration systems that will be built as part of a later phase. Those aren't approved by BWC engineering yet, but they are approved at the master plan level that there will be large infiltration systems on site. As I mentioned, this will also, this entire pipe run you see in the plan on the left encompassed by a new easement for BWC access and maintenance that runs all the way beyond what is shown here, beyond what is considered the on-com jurisdiction area. So this 48-inch pipe still has enough capacity and then some to serve our entire site. So we arrived at 48 inches, and it's much higher, so it will have much, many more hours in the day of full capacity. You know, as tides vary between elevation one and about 11 in the tidal cycles. So obviously with the, the pipe really sitting between elevation seven, say, and 11 for the crown, we'll have, most of the time, we'll have full capacity of this pipe, and the tide gate will be open. And in times of high tide or extreme tide, you know, that tide gate will be closed. And so we wanted to, you know, bring this to, to the commission through this amendment to show the design advancements we've made alongside with BWC, and also to cover the, just the construction of these pipes and structures that are within the buffer zone. So that really was what triggered coming in for this amendment, was just this run of pipe, this new structure, and obviously they amended outfall versus what we had shown two years ago.
Okay, okay. Is, oh, go ahead. You have more to do.
Yep, I can be very brief. I think the, the, just something to note is that all of our mitigation measures remain the same. And while construction is happening, or deconstruction actually is happening out there, the, we have a slip in place and spill mitigation and all that currently on site at this time. So no, no change to anything that we initially had said in our Notice of Intent or the parts of the order that you wrote.
Okay. So Laura, does this work expand the amount of work you're doing in any of the areas we're concerned about?
So the, there's, there's no, the, sorry, I'll just, if we could go back to that slide with the brown coloring. Everything within that brown color was approved. So sort of that was our limit of work before. And now the area that is not, has not been, you know, I guess governed by this order. It was governed under the deconstruction order, but not this particular one, which is the pipe outside of that brown area.
Okay, the dark brown area?
That's right.
Okay. Okay. Eleanor, what do you have on this?
I don't have anything to add on this.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sullivan? I'm interested in what you have to say. I had a lot of questions, and I'm sure you're going to answer them.
Oh, yeah. Well, no, we're, we're all for the 48. We believe that's the best system, and they, you know, we've been working with them on that. The light tan area that's there, is that all going to be filled?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Was that going to be filled under the original order?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. No, I believe that was true. I just wanted you to say it for the public record. Not that we want to catch it, but we will. So that's how it works. No, I don't have any comments. We did meet with them. This is preferable for us. It allows us to maintain it easier. It's shallower. It's, it's to our benefit, and we will be owning, the Boston Water Sewer will be owning both the structure and the, the outfall, so it's, it meets all our criteria.
Great, thank you. And you artfully clarified the question I was trying to ask inartfully. I appreciate that. Commissioner Long.
No further questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Wilson.
I'm here either. Thank you.
Commissioner Conan.
I was just curious if the new outfall pipes will have backflow prevention?
Yeah, so I could speak to that. So there is no, nothing that is titled the backflow preventer, but the tide gate itself will close when the tide level reaches a point where you wouldn't want saltwater to get into the, the system upstream of that square structure there. There's also a stoplog system that we are adding, basically a stainless steel frame with composite stoplogs that will enable BWC to extend their working times and maintenance times basically to 24 hours if they would like on a normal day without rain or, you know, extreme tide. If they were to want to replace hardware or be in the structure for an extended period of time. So I mean, basically, the idea is that the backflow prevention is this 48-inch stainless steel tide gate. We do have more detail on that in the BWC plans that Commissioner Sullivan has reviewed and will hopefully approve soon, or give his final thoughts on that. And we're willing to share those. We just wanted to keep this brief. So, you know, there is a pretty substantial piece of hardware that is, basically its sole purpose is backflow prevention of saltwater.
I see. Thank you. I appreciate it. So just for clarity, then, because of that, there will not be any water from the ocean getting into the pipes at all?
Yes, it will not be able to get beyond that square structure you see on the plan.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you. That's all.
Commissioner Richmond.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Herbst.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand. Are you, it looks to me like this steel cap is out further under this scenario, where it used to look like it went through the revetment. Now it goes out further. Am I, am I misunderstanding? Is, is there a change there in terms of how far this goes out into the water?
Uh, there is a note there on the profile. I, I think that's what you're referring to, where we have a zinc-coated steel grate. Is that, is that what you're asking about?
No, it, it looks like it's a, it, it points to it as the steel channel cap. It's a vertical pipe. And in your original plans, it sort of goes halfway through the revetment, and now it's further out, I think. But you can tell me what I'm looking at.
Well, I could say that the, so that steel channel cap is on top of the sheet pile wall. And again, I'm just a civil engineer. I'm not a structural engineer, but I know enough about it to say. And Laura and John and I, John Flaherty on the phone have talked about this. We have not changed the location of any sheet piles since the original approval. So that steel channel cap is actually just what's on the top of the sheet pile wall, which has not changed. So that line has not moved.
Has the revetment changed? Because if you, or you're calling it the riprap here, but it didn't.
Let's go back, let's go back one slide, DeeDee.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's on your presentation. No, we have it. Here it is.
Yeah, so this is Section AA. So I think part of the issue, and I, I totally understand your question, is this section is not 100% equal in the location to where the new outfall ended up. And so it's actually a different section. So this, basically, my, the answer to the question is the sections are different because they're not the same exact section. This is showing the original approved plan to reuse the outfall, which is at Section AA. The, the section that was cut by the structural engineer is in a slightly different location. So I think the riprap moved a bit in that section. Not a revision, but just the way it looks visually. So I appreciate the question, because obviously you would think that, you know, apples to apples, but the, the new outfall doesn't run in the same exact section line as the old outfalls did. So the section looks a little different, but I can assure you that we did not change any of the riprap in the plan, which is part of the fill that we talked about two years ago, or we did not change the location of the wall and that gap. In the plan, which is part of the fill that we talked about two years ago, or we did not change the location of the wall and that gap.
Okay. Well, I won't claim to understand.
Commissioner, what he's saying is that the thing called the new steel sheet pile wall is still the same. No matter where you poke the new pipe through, that hasn't moved. That's that light tan area that that's still the same those under the original order, or at least that's what they represented. But that hasn't changed.
All right. Well, Commissioner Sullivan, if you are comfortable with this, then so am I. So, thank you.
Oh, that's so hot warming. I can't take it.
Good. And Commissioner Herbst, I think you're getting at the potential for increased adverse impacts or just change in scope.
I just couldn't figure out if if they, I mean, I assume the rip rap extends down to the water. And if this steel pipe is now at the end of the rip rap, it would seem like it was down in the water somewhere where it wasn't before. And and I, I honestly didn't. I I'm not grasping the explanation, but I'm just gonna assume that it's okay.
Okay.
Well, I just, I just want to, one more thing is this is existing rip rap that, you know, we've assumed and put in our drawings. There were divers down here, various inspections. These sections of the rip rap that extends from the existing concrete structures. We're not changing that. So I I think it's it's literally just a graphical representation of where the section was cut. So you can see section AA in plan is kind of on the left of the two sawtooths. And that kind of pushes the rip rap out to the left in the section. And Dee Dee, if you go to the next slide. Section CC, well, this is a, this plan is the hash color plan, but you can see that this section. Through the through the new pipe, it's all the way to the right now compared to where the old section of the old pipe was on the left of these sawtooths. So you can see the existing red line. That's kind of pulled in, you know, ten to fifteen feet. So that pulls that existing rip rap back, which again, we're not, that's not part of our plan. But you can see how the section moved to the right, you know, say fifty feet. I'm not in a good place to give you real measurements, but I think you can just see how this is a section of what's going on existing below where we're working. That's not new rip rap. There is some new rip rap. It's part of the original filing to the west of here, but that's that hasn't changed. So I think I I see where you're catching that little slide of that existing rip rap. But I think you can see now that it's because we're cutting the section in a different place because the new outfall is not the same location as the old one.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, thank you. Eleanor, anybody from the public raise their hand?
I'm not seeing any raised hands and we also don't have anything in the inbox for this.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to amend the order of conditions to include the. Construction or the installation of a a single new forty eight inch diameter outfall. With a tide gate replacing the proposed work of or the whatever work would be required to reuse the two existing. Oversized ninety six inch outfalls. Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries seven nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, so where does that leave us with not much? Okay, there have been a number of continuances continued have been notice of intent for DEP file number zero zero six one seven zero four. Boston file number twenty twenty dash zero zero seven, notice of intent for DEP file number zero zero six one seven seven two. And Boston file number twenty twenty one dash zero one zero. DEP file number zero zero six one nine six one and Boston file number twenty twenty three dash zero five one. DEP file number zero zero six one nine eight seven and Boston file number twenty twenty four dash zero one two. DEP file number zero zero six one nine nine one and Boston file number twenty twenty four dash zero one six. And DEP file number zero zero six one nine nine zero and Boston file number twenty twenty four dash zero one five. We'll now begin our regular meeting. The first item on the agenda for the regular meeting is a request for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number zero zero six. One seven seven four for the demolition of a residential building, construction of a new multifamily residential building located at eight thirty nine Saratoga Street. East Boston resource areas land subject to coastal storm flowage. Eleanor, what do you have on this?
We have not received any updates from the applicants. We would recommend that the commission continue the vote.
Okay, so no action on this one. Next item on the agenda is request for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number zero zero six one eight five three. For the utility upgrades and associated transformer and transformer pad installation located at twelve Farnsworth Street in South Boston. Resource areas land subject to coastal storm flowage. Eleanor?
We conducted a site visit on May ninth, twenty twenty four. There are some photos for the commission's review in the drive folder. Based on our review, based on the filing, the work was done according to the issued order of conditions. And based on that, we would recommend that the commission issue a certificate of compliance.
Thank you. Any questions from any commissioners? Hearing that, I would, whoop.
No, no, I was trying to be polite and say no to you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Would you be willing to make a motion to issue the certificate of compliance and be even more polite?
Not that polite.
Okay, someone else, please do that.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries seven nothing. Next item on the agenda is a request for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number zero zero six one eight six six. For the construction of a stormwater infiltration system overflow connection and rear stairs located at thirty three to forty one Farnsworth Street. In South Boston, resource areas land subject to coastal storm flowage. Eleanor, what do you have on this?
We also conducted a site visit for this about ten minutes later on May ninth, twenty twenty four. Again, per our review, the work was done according to the issued order of conditions. And based on that, we would recommend issuing a COC. Again, there are photos in the drive folder for the commission's review. And happy to answer any questions.
Great. Any questions? Okay, I would entertain a motion to issue a certificate of compliance for DP file number zero zero six one eight six six.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson? Commissioner Condon? Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries seven nothing. Next item on the agenda is a request for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number zero zero six one eight nine six. For the renovation of an existing single family dwelling and associated parking and drainage improvements located at five Rice Street in Dorchester. Resource area again is land subject to coastal storm flowage.
Uh, this one was different in that we conducted a site visit a day later on May tenth, twenty twenty four. There are also photos in the drive folder for the commission to review. Based on our review, the work was done according to the issued permit. And if you'll recall, this project was in front of the commission recently for a partial certificate of compliance. That was for the work that was done related to the building on site. The remaining work was some landscaping and that seems to have been done in accordance with the permit they were issued. So based on that, we would again recommend issuing a certificate of compliance.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Okay, and entertain a motion to issue a certificate of compliance for DP file number zero zero six one eight nine six.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries seven nothing. Okay, next item on the agenda is a, it can be very interesting under administrative updates. Eleanor, do you have any besides our discussion?
Just a quick note that there is an administrative approval which we processed for the Red Bull diving event that was happening. They have an existing order of conditions. We've previously issued them an administrative approval to do the exact same scope of work just for two years following. They believe that this is probably the last year that they'll be doing it in Boston. But we've also shared with them that if they see this happening for another year, they might want to consider an amendment and extension. And that is also in the folder along with the request for that administrative approval for your review.
Great, thank you. Has anyone ever been to that? It's actually a little scary. They're pretty high up there.
I've seen some videos.
Yeah, Commissioner Herbst has seen it too. It's it's a little harrowing. Okay, so.
Excuse me. Mr. Chair, can I, I just want to make sure that we have an, when a a COC is continued, we don't have to vote on that, right?
No, we don't.
Okay, thank you.
I want to mention if you drink too much Red Bull, you'll jump off tall buildings too, so.
That makes sense. The sponsor actually makes sense in this. Okay, perfect. Mr. Button, you're here to. Give us a very interesting update on the Massachusetts Habitat Conservation Plan for piping plovers at the Curly Center in South Boston.
I am. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Robert Button, CDM Smith, seventy five State Street in Boston. I'm here representing the city of Boston and the Centers for Youth and Families. Eleanor, if you could push the slide, I have a very, very brief slide presentation just to give you an update on the activities since. I was in last September. Here is a picture of the bathhouse itself. The K Street entrance is on the left of the page and the. L Street is in the center and M Street is on the right hand side of the page. This is a rendering from the recently completed. Updates and construction of the site. Next slide. The next slide just shows you the resource areas. This is information that I presented previously, the resource areas that exist at the site. Including the estimated habitat, which is shown in the green, which extends from the high water line to the edge of the concrete deck at the building. Next slide, please. In twenty twenty three, we were able to prepare a beach operation and maintenance plan, which was implemented at the end of the twenty three season and through the fall. This operation and maintenance plan enabled the city to be eligible to receive a certificate of inclusion. And a habitat conservation plan to allow increased use of the site. That's the subject of tonight's presentation. If you go to the next slide, please. Just quickly to, again, showing the recently renovated site from Google Earth. If you notice the four magenta colored dots on the screen, those are the locations of four nests. That were established at the site last year. The black lines are the nest fencing that was also put on the site. The entire beach access was restricted last year during the nesting season until the beach management plan and final approvals were in place. The chicks had fledged at that point in time and and the beach was reopened for use. But during last season, those are the locations of the nests and that is what the fencing looked like. Next slide, please. This, just to show you, this was included in our habitat conservation plan submittal to give you an idea of of the increase in the pairs at the site. As well as the increase in the number of fledges that have occurred pretty regularly since twenty eighteen. Next slide, please. So immediately after we obtained the beach management plan approval last year, we began working with the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. They were quite helpful in in helping us to prepare the application. We also were working with Mass Audubon. They have coastal waterbird monitors that have been working actively at the site since twenty eighteen. As part of the habitat conservation plan, they have increased their activity and monitoring and oversight at the site. And they're helping the city to implement the habitat conservation plan that was approved just a few weeks ago in late April. Next slide, please. What this habitat conservation plan does is allows the city to impact up to two pairs of plovers at the site. And those impacts are spelled out in the in the habitat conservation plan. I'll get to them in a second as to what we can do. This Commonwealth has been included in the federal permit. And by submitting this habitat conservation plan and by obtaining a certificate of inclusion, the city of Boston is now a subpermittee to the Commonwealth. As part of that process of program. Next slide, please. The certificate of inclusion spells out here, but basically allows a take. And that take isn't a isn't a physical taking or or isn't a fatality for the bird, but it's an impact to their nesting areas and to their habitat. And as part of our plan submittal, we identified several different activities that would be undertaken by. Mass Audubon and city staff in order to coexist with the with the plovers at the site. And to make sure that we could be as protective as possible for them. Next slide, please. What this slide shows is the permitted activities that are allowed in order to manage the property itself. The the first three are the ones that, the first three with checks in the in the in the box are the ones that are currently being implemented at the site. As I said, in twenty twenty three, the entire beach was fenced off. You'll see in a second, we were able to create a corridor from the structure to the beach. That allows the city to utilize the site in a safe manner for the public, but allows it to also coexist. So the fencing limits have changed slightly. We've also, because those overall limits have changed, there's reduction in the fencing. Around the nests themselves that that is occurring and is allowed. And then finally, beach raking as a deterrent to keep the plovers from establishing nests in certain areas. The cover boards, flagging, chick herding, barriers and nest moving have have not and and aren't likely to be required based on what we're seeing so far this year. And the, any additional activity, even though it's allowed in the permit, would need to be coordinated with. The Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. The city has Mass Audubon under agreement to provide weekly monitoring reports as required under the permit to Mass Audubon. And to provide the onsite staff. Next slide, please. So this slide here will show you the reduced fencing. So the green areas are the areas where there's proactive fencing where the beach is fenced off to allow the plovers to establish their nests. Then the nests themselves, this is showing the twenty twenty three nests remarkably, they're in very, very similar locations, especially in the K Street. And to the left of the L Street beaches, those areas are the most attractive for nesting and offer the most. Beach area above the high watermark. So they they generally tend to congregate in those areas. And that's where nesting those areas, that's why we had established that as a deterrent area. The pink that you'll see in the center of the of the figure is the is the estimated area that was allowed for the public use of the beach during the nesting. I believe that's the last slide. I knew you had a busy agenda, so I didn't want to go into a lot of detail. I just was asked to provide a brief update on where the city is at and what's occurring at the site. I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Sure, thanks, Bob. Couple of quick questions and maybe I just have not been reading these permits thoroughly enough. I got stuck on the word incidental take. I'm not sure I've seen that before. Is that a term of art or is it boilerplate that's in all of these permits?
It's all boilerplate in the permit that I've seen in the language that I've seen in the guidance documents and the permits themselves. The natural heritage folks provided us with a lot of go buys and information from previously approved site. There's a Wedgmead Beach Club on the Cape. It's a pretty similar site and a lot of this was modeled after that.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then as far as the preferred nesting areas here where you expected to see them. I mean, is some of that due to the mitigation, not the mitigation, the measures that are being taken like the raking of the beach? Sort of confining the plovers to these nesting areas or? Is this what you would expect to happen?
It's it's the area where the birds have nested historically throughout the last six years that we have data for them. Again, it's the largest area of beach that's least impacted by the tides. On the M Street side, there was overwash of the entire nests last year and the nests were were taken out. So in addition to the increased activity, human activity on the beach immediately to the right of it. And as well as the physical conditions of the tides, it it isn't as attractive an area. So they generally tend to congregate more to the left side of the site. And that's why those green areas were established in order to provide the most beach in the most highest. The beach that has the highest likelihood of success.
Okay, okay. Eleanor, do you have anything on this?
I don't have anything further to note.
Okay, Commissioner Sullivan, any questions?
Yeah, Bob, when is nesting season over and where do these characters go when they leave? Yeah, Bob, when is nesting season over and where do these characters go when they leave?
Uh, nesting season is generally over in late July, early August. Um, and I'm, I don't know the answer to where they go when they leave. I've been so focused on where they are when they're here that I I hadn't done a lot of research as to where they go, John. Uh, but uh, generally it, the the activities start the first week of March in terms of the the nesting. There's active nesting going on at the site now. And um, the, it it generally occurs through July. They they, they fledge out of the nest pretty quickly uh, within within these days. Uh, so once they're, once they're born, it's a pretty quick process. It's about six weeks, I believe, uh, for the eggs themselves to hatch. We're right in that, the middle of that now.
Well, gives you something to look up. That's good.
I will, I will, I will get you a response tomorrow, John.
That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Long?
Uh, nothing for me. Just appreciate all the information in the presentation. Thanks, Bob.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Commissioner Wilson?
N- n- yeah, no other questions. Appreciate it. Thank you.
You, Commissioner Condon?
Very interesting. So when you say four nests, do you literally mean four nests, Bob?
Yes, the four nests with, I believe there's two nag, two eggs in each of the nests uh, uh, from the reports I've seen with um, Natural Heritage. But yes, they're they're nests that are dug into the sand on the beach itself.
Hmm, but wh- what washed away the nest near the M Street?
With the tide, um, with with high tides and with king tides, will come right up to the face of the structure. So it it completely covered the beach, washed over the beach.
Oh, so so the the high beach area that you spoke about doesn't actually exist on that side? Above the high water limit?
It's a very, very flat site. M Street is is slightly lower than um, the 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 western, west side of L and K. Um, so and it, the way it's oriented in the harbor, it gets the wave action first. There was during the tide last year after the chicks had fledged, uh, water uh, coming up against the face of the building. And it's a pile-supported structure um, uh, during late August, during some of the storms we had at the end of the summer last year. So it does happen on the entire beach uh, during past years. It has only affected the M Street nest.
So it's the more vulnerable part of the beach?
Correct.
So it it's good to see that the number of fledges have increased, but it seems like the fledges pair, pair has gone down. Is that correct?
It's, it's a slight change. I think it's associated with losing uh, the nest last year on the M Street beach is why there's a reduction in in the numbers from last year. Generally speaking, the trend has been increasing over time, certainly in the number of pairs. And then the, the chicks that fledge would likely go up as well. The reason we were able to affect two nests is the permit allows you to affect fifty percent of the birds onsite. So that's why we can't do these deterrents or these reduced fencing everywhere. We had to limit it to a very specific percentage of the property and then limit it to only affecting two pairs.
Uh, I see. So it it's a very small number to read into, I guess. Right?
Correct.
Yeah, so it it's, it's good to know the trend may be actually be positive. Did you say sub-permittee? I didn't know what that meant.
So the the Commonwealth holds the permit and the city of Boston is is a sub-permittee under the Commonwealth's permit. We don't hold a direct uh, take permit with the federal government. The the Commonwealth, the state does. And and then the state is allowed to have the uh, various sub-permittees, in this case, the city of Boston.
So we basically have a permit?
Correct.
Okay.
Which is not direct with the federal governments through the state.
Right. So you know, I I live in East Boston and and the, at the marsh, the, in the Belal Marsh, we see that the same osprey pair returns to the same nest every year. So is that the case with the plovers too? You were talking about how the nests are pretty much in the same location?
It's not the same nest because it's in the sand and in the beach. So it it obviously with the changes from year to year. But it's generally the same locations, same general area of the beach.
Okay, cool. Thank you. This is very interesting and good work. Um, Commissioner Sullivan, I I did look it up. It looks like if you wanna go for a vacation in the Caribbean for the winter, you can climb on one of the plovers.
Seems so fragile. It looks like they could only get up to Spectacle Island.
Yeah, they're delicate. Um, okay, Commissioner Richmond?
Uh, you know, thank you very much. I I I really enjoyed this. Um, you know, there's so, there's so little good news um, anywhere, and this sounds like good news. So thank you very much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Herbst?
Yeah, I'm just curious. So are, is the public allowed to use the the brown areas? And and are they able to enter the beach from the bathhouses or?
No, they 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 enter the beach through the pink area, Commissioner.
Okay, yeah.
And then what you see is brown is just the tidal zone, the intertidal zone from low to high water. Uh, so they, the the habitat doesn't extend into that area because they couldn't nest
Right.
with, obviously with the water coming up and down. So that public can use that area. Generally speaking, they try to control folks and keep them in the center of the beach so that they're not sort of going around the fencing, if you will.
Yeah.
But the, that area is all open.
Okay. So I just wanted to say to commissioners, you should go down there and check it out at some point. Um, piping plover chicks are about the cutest thing you're gonna see. They look like little cotton balls running around on toothpicks. Um, the nests are almost impossible to see and I think these birds are endangered because they aren't the brightest things ever. Part of their, you know, if they're feeling endangered, the chicks, they just hunker down, which means if somebody could step on them, but they are extremely cute. So I say go check it out.
Thank you. Okay, um, so it, this needs a COC at some point, right?
Or Chair Parker, the um, I believe the the Curly Center itself might still have some items outstanding.
Ah, okay.
Construction order, Elena, right? From the construction order of condition?
Or for the order of conditions for the, for the Curly Center itself.
Okay.
Yeah, are you working on that, Bob?
I I am not. Uh, we helped them with the initial permits. Um, I will, I will look into it and see if we can get that certificate closed out. Uh, we did, we did get an order for the beach management plan, uh, which I assume will continue in perpetuity. The the permit, the Habitat Conservation Plan permit is for a three-year term. This is year one. Um, so we'll, we'll coordinate on the details of the, of the approval of the beach management plan separately from the certificate for the construction.
Okay, yeah, anything you could do would be appreciated. Thank you.
Absolutely, sure.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Um, that was very interesting.
Sure, my pleasure. Have a great evening, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, you too. Um, next item on the agenda are uh, acceptance of orders of conditions. Uh, and we have two of them and they are the uh, legacy DCR orders of conditions. So they will be continued uh, until we reach final resolution. And those are um, DEP file number zero zero six one nine five eight and Boston file number twenty twenty-three dash zero four eight and DEP file number zero zero six one nine two eight and Boston file number twenty twenty-three dash zero one eight. Um, last item on the agenda is acceptance of the meeting minutes from May first, twenty twenty-four. Uh, I looked them over. They looked great. Made very minor edits. Um, would someone make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from Feb- uh, May first, twenty twenty-four?
I'm moved.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson? Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries seven, nothing. Okay, motion to adjourn by acclamation? Any objections? Great, thank you. I think we have three weeks off, right?
Oh, we do, yeah. It's, it's gonna be a minute, uh, June fifth, I believe.
Yep, Elena, you knew that right off the top of your head. Okay, thank you for your hard work.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks.